The regular meeting with Ferguson Township Board Supervisors for Monday, February 3rd. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start, I just want to acknowledge that we have some guests here tonight from PAC 44, scouts, guests and leaders. Welcome, guys. I hope that you enjoy seeing local government in work. Okay, as first item on the agenda is citizens' input for anything that's not on the agenda. Does anyone care to address the board on any items that aren't on the agenda? Seeing none, we have special reports. The Center Region Parks and Recreation Authority, Bill Keel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Bill Keel, resident Ferguson Township, and I am the appointed member of the Center Region Park and Recreation Authority here for a report to the board. Got five items to report on tonight. I think the first one that I want to talk about a little bit is the Millbrook Marsh issue. Some of you may well be aware that we've had a crisis in terms of infrastructure at the Millbrook Marsh. Our boardwalk has started to fail in several locations. A little bit history-wise, from what I understand, in terms of the boardwalk, the boardwalk is a very prominent feature at the marsh. A lot of people utilize that, both for instructional access to the marsh itself, as well as just a nice evening walk through the marsh. It was constructed in the 40s or 50s. It's been a long time. And in fact, as of a couple of weeks ago, it was reported that there are no records of installation, drawings, engineering, any things. It was just constructed. And in fact, looking at the construction, a number of the under support beams and so on that come in contact with the ground are not necessarily, it appears on footers, and that has contributed to the crisis that we have. With over a year now of high water in the center region, we have three streams that intersect in the marsh. And with the high water that we've had throughout the marsh, throughout the center region, streambeds and flows have to be involved, and all of those answers carry dollar signs with them.
Right. Great. Thank you. And that leads to my last question slash point, which is, what will the role of the advisory board be in this project? It seems really ideal for a capital campaign, and perhaps that advisory board, I'm not sure what function they actually serve at this point, but they might be a good vehicle for a capital campaign for the Millbrook Marsh boardwalk. So, just putting that out there.
I will, and I will certainly add that to my list of items at our next meeting
Thanks.
of the authority. I do not believe, I know I haven't been in a discussion yet, that ferrets out what, who's going to have what role in this process. The land is owned by Penn State University. And so, you know, actors that are, have investment in this are going to be multiple, and I'm just not sure whether, whether there's been a great deal of thought yet in terms of what our authority role will be.
Thank you so much, Bill.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Sure.
Oh, you have a question?
Yeah.
Oh, Bill, we had another question.
I have one.
On your office tonight.
Yeah. So, I wanted to know, especially since you said that, you know, people sort of just came and built the boardwalk the first time it happened. I have heard from the community overwhelming support for it, at least that's who has talked to me. But my concern is sort of lack of information in this, and I would like to see if you have some of those answers, as to what is the impact of the boardwalk on the marsh land?
When it was already there, it allowed, this is my impression, it allowed customers, people, residents, to get up close and personal with activities that are marsh-oriented, bugs, birds, all kinds of amphibious animals, fish, et cetera, to do studying and so on. But the boardwalk was already there. Now, we're going to intervene in terms of interaction with the marsh itself. And those details of how that's going to happen and, and have not been flushed out yet. They haven't even really been discussed terribly in a lot of detail. That's part of what the feasibility study, we hope, will be able to identify in terms of what kind of impact going in and repairing the boardwalk is going to have, and whether that impact, based on the agencies that we've got to deal with, whether the impact will outweigh the need and usability by the public to the point where it won't be done at all. I, you know, when I, when I talk to engineers, they admit to me without too much difficulty that there isn't a problem they can't solve. The issue is, how much is it going to cost? And so, that's, but we haven't gotten close to that yet, I don't believe. But I think the feasibility study will give us some sense of what the impact will be.
Okay. Because from your description, I thought that it seemed overwhelming that you talked about the repair and the future. It seemed like that there would be a marsh, there would be a boardwalk put in. But if the, you know, since nobody, it seems like nobody has studied it.
Right.
It would make sense first to see what the impact on the marsh land itself is, and if you put something in, what are the changes in the weather patterns and so on, that will it get washed again in 10 years, or, you know, harm the marshland further. And I would like to know all of those things to be on the feasibility study, so that we make an informed decision.
And, and, and it's my sense that we have some real challenges here, because part of the, part of the boardwalk is still usable and will continue to be used. If there is repair and re-installation of the parts that are not, what about the places that haven't failed yet? Their, their lifespan is going to come up reasonably soon as well. And, and so, you know, that stuff just hasn't been talked about. We had, in our capital plan, looked at some repairs to be done over next year and the year after, with some capital money set aside in our budget, to be able to do that. But this high water issue, along with the freeze cycle, and the unknown in the world, how it was installed to begin with, and the fact that it was susceptible to some of this stuff, you know, has just thrown a curve into the process. So, we thought we were reasonably on board with the stuff, but now we find that we're not.
Can I just ask one quick question? The municipalities have been asked to pledge some money to match grants for the education building. I forget how many.
At the marsh?
Yeah, at the marsh. Not to put it aside, well, to put it aside, not to give it over right away. Was there any discussion about those funds being applied to the boardwalk? And is fundraising for that education building expansion on hold now?
I can't answer that question. I think, I think the answer to that question is still floating, because I don't think there's a good feel for how much money we're talking about. And certainly with the building, I know that there, there's a fair amount of private dollars that have been pledged for that facility. And certainly, moving those dollars to something else would, in my mind, would, would, would require that we go back to the, the private dollars that have been pledged already, to see whether there's any willingness to have that occur or not. But there's been no discussion with, with the authority about that. That is a good question. But a lot of that, my understanding is that we've got a big chunk of private dollars that are
For the building, okay.
Part of that building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, now we're done. Next item on the agenda is under unfinished business. Authorization of a public hearing on a resolution of the township, Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, on amending the Ferguson Township 2020 annual operating budget by modifying or increasing expenditures as described. I don't know if that's Dave or Eric.
I'm going to introduce it and turn it over to Eric, but, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask, the minute, did you want to approve the minutes?
Oh, let's do that.
Later in the agenda, okay.
Before we get to the next item, we'll go with the approval amendments for the January 20th, 2020 Board of Supervisors regular meeting. Do you have a motion?
So, Lou?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And second. Any changes or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, motion carries. So now we'll go to the budget amendment.
Thank you. So, like you said, I'll just tee us up, and then I'll, I'll kick it over to Eric to talk about the specifics. But under Section 7.08 of the Home Rule Charter, the Board of Supervisors is permitted to amend the budget post-adoption, follow and provided that a resolution is authorized for public hearing. That public hearing would then be set for, if approved this evening, for February 18th, for official adoption of a budget amendment. So, the action that I'm requesting tonight of the board would be to authorize that public hearing for February 18th, and it would not actually be by this action amending the budget. That would come on the 18th, at the conclusion of the public hearing. Excuse me. The purpose of the proposed budget amendment is really to shuffle expenditures from the Capital Reserve Fund into the Township's Liquid Fuels Fund. So, from Fund 30, Capital Reserve, to Fund 35, Liquid Fuels. And I'll ask Eric to review the specifics that we're requesting be moved around a little bit. But the intent would be to allow the township to take full advantage of what we're permitted to purchase through our Liquid Fuels Fund. Liquid Fuels is a special revenue fund, meaning that we get, we collect revenue from state assessments based on impacts, largely a formula based on the number of road miles in the municipality. And we have to use it for that specific purpose, improving infrastructure and road network. So, it's, it's a restricted fund, meaning there's certain eligible expenditures. A number of those that were included previously in Capital Reserve are eligible under Liquid Fuels. So, that's really what I'll be proposing, that we remove by resolution. But the, the reason behind it is to cover a couple of unfunded expenditures in the 2020 operating budget. One would be the remainder of the Park Hills Drainage Way design project. There's approximately 150,000, Eric will go over the specifics, in that, that remains encumbered from fiscal year 2019, that needs to be rebudgeted in 2020. And then, secondly, to cover an increased contingency associated with the Public Works Maintenance Facility. So, you may recall, as part of the budget discussion, we included approximately 2% of the construction amount for contingency, meaning unforeseen expenses associated with the construction of the Public Works Maintenance Facility. Based on some folks that we've, you know, Dave and I have talked to, that are more familiar with building projects, they really like that number to be closer to 5 to 7% of the, of the building estimate. So, by making these modifications to the budget, it would permit us to have some additional reserve available for any unforeseen overages affiliated with that building. And then, lastly, would be to allow the township to engage a construction management firm. We did budget $250,000, as the board will see later tonight. The construction management firm is about approximately $300,000. So, there's a little bit overage based on what our estimate was. So, those couple of items are captured in the budget amendment that I'm proposing. The one note, noted removal this year, which really we proposed to defer to 2021, would be to take out the purchase of the bucket truck. We do have a functioning bucket truck right now, so we would just make that last another year. It's got issues. It's not, you know, it's not always running as we hope, you know, as well as we hope it would be. But it's serviceable, and it's manageable, and we can, we can get by another year without it. So, Eric is going to just highlight the amendments that are captured in the draft resolution that you got with your agenda packet, but he can explain them, so you know what's going where.
Sure. Thanks, Dave. One of the reasons for this change is the fact that Liquid Fuels Fund balance is estimated to be $920,000 at the end of 2020, and the Capital Reserve Fund balance is estimated to be $134,000. With these additions, there's concern whether or not there's sufficient fund balance to pay for the changes in the Public Works Building, plus the addition of the Park Hills Drainage Design. Currently, we budgeted $500,000 as contingency, and we're looking to add an additional $506,450 to pay for that. What we suggest to move the 2011 F-550, a skid steer, a Bow Mag roller, a flail mower, heat lance, overhead luminaires, traffic signal LEDs from Capital Reserve to Liquid Fuels in the amount of $306,300. With that, and the postponement of the bucket truck purchased to 2021, it's a net change of negative $3,850. So,
Which means?
With this addition to Capital Reserve, we're actually going to save a little bit of money from the current budget, in Capital Reserve. But we will be adding it to the Liquid Fuels budget.
So, it's, it's a bit of, you know, more of a shuffling of anything, as I said, with the exception of the removal of the bucket truck, which would be deferred until next year. But it allows us to be in much better financial position with respect to the construction of the, of the maintenance facility. We checked, these are all eligible Liquid Fuels expenditures. And that's really it. I'll answer any questions that the board has.
Good for Senator.
So, you mentioned that the state puts in some money to this fund?
Yes, I believe a majority of the funding, the revenue in Liquid Fuels comes from state allocations. Is that fair?
Yeah, my, my question is, irrespective of the shuffle, the amount coming in from the state is going to be, it will be the same, or will, is there a match by the state?
No, that's correct. The, the funding is generally fixed, meaning the formula that uses, that's used to determine what our allocation is, remains the same year to year. It might be a little bit different in terms of the dollar amounts that we get, but, but generally the formula is stable.
And I, and other clarifying questions. There were these items, which were equipment that you're moving from there to there. So, does that mean that the money to buy those equipment is being moved, and the equipment will not be bought, or is it, can you explain?
We're going to fund it from a different fund, as opposed to Capital Reserve. Instead of taking out the Capital Reserve money, we're going to take out Liquid Fuels money.
And why does that help?
Can I build on that a little bit? So, just on municipal budgeting, the township is required to stay balanced, we have a balanced budget requirement, meaning we're not permitted to overspend by fund. And you'll see all the time that there's deviations in the accounts. If you look at our budget, you see, you know, pages and pages, hundreds of pages of accounts, and descriptions and everything. And the general fund is obviously, is our biggest fund. So, there's, most of our accounts exist within the general fund. And at the end of the year, you know, some of those are over what we had in the account, and some of those are under what we had in the account. But when you, you know, net it out and do all the pluses and minuses, it has to be equal to or less than the expenditures that were approved by the Board of Supervisors. And that's true of all of our funds. So, our Capital Reserve Fund, Transportation Improvement Fund, Liquid Fuels Fund, we have several, that if there's expenditures that are going to exceed what's budgeted by the board, then the board actually has to adopt this amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Thank you.
I would add one other thing to that, which is that because of the restrictions what we spend Capital Reserve on, there's a big balance in there. We've built up over the years. So,
Liquid Fuels.
The Liquid Fuels tag, the Liquid Fuels account. So, we're not cutting something from there in order to do this. It's just more of a matter of moving in the accounting. So, any other questions?
Just a couple. So, I don't want to get too deep into this, but why wouldn't those things have been in Liquid Fuels to begin with?
Well, I mean, it's a good question. I mean, it really is just a matter of the budgeting process. It's more often the case that we put equipment in Capital Reserve because it meets our standard of capital equipment. It is an eligible Liquid Fuels expenditure, but we generally don't cover equipment that way. So, this is a little bit of a deviation from what we've done in the past. But we certainly could add equipment into Liquid Fuels, but we would have to be more mindful of what that does over time to the fund balance.
Okay. And then why is the cost for the construction manager so high, $300,000? Is this one person coming here, or, because the building should be done by October or so, so that's, is that one person coming, or is this?
Well, I think Dave's going to talk more about the details too later in the evening, but maybe you want to speak to that?
Sure. So, later in the evening, I actually have a little, little spreadsheet that has a breakdown of man-hours. But it's, it is, it involves one full-time person here on-site during construction. So, the construction calendar is 140 workdays, so plus rain days or any extensions that they have, so this year. And then it also includes support staff for schedule review, change order reviews, processing, administrative functions. The resident person on-site would do inspections. What we'll talk about a little bit later, maybe I'm talking about some of it now, is we did have another firm that provided proposals. Some of the unit rates were higher, and they were proposing more staffing and two people on-site. And so, we did try to keep the costs down, you know, as reasonable as we can. But it is, well, when we get to that point, you can see the total man-hours and what their, what their unit rates are. So, it's one person full-time on-site, plus a staff to support reviews of submittals and processing paperwork, schedules, administrative functions.
And they're aware of our budget constraints, and they're going to do what they can as we go through the process. The contract is kind of like a not-to-exceed number, but there's some indirect expenses that are associated with it, any per diems or anything for lodging and stuff, for having somebody out there on-site. somebody out there on-site. So it's really a contract for just over $246,000, and if we can save money throughout the process, we'll try to find ways to do that. But then there's also an additional, I think we've estimated around $20,000 approximately for indirect expenses, or direct expenses.
I had a question on the bucket truck. I guess my basic question is, are we sure that that truck is good enough to carry us another year? Or are we, you know, in order to keep this budget amendment smaller, you know, cutting something we really shouldn't cut? Because if we are, I'd rather take it out of the general fund, you know, while we're making a budget change now. If it really is something that we're confident is good enough for waiting a year, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, well, we'll be fine. I think, and I, Dave and I spoke with the arborist, you know, quite a bit about this just to see what, I think the one, you know, the one real advantage that the bucket truck, the new bucket truck would give us, other than being a little more reliable than our current piece of equipment, is, number one, it's higher, I think we're proposing 100 foot.
It's a 70 foot instead of a 45.
70, so it's about, it gives us about an extra, you know, 25 feet in reach. And then, secondly, it would allow us to pull behind a chipper. So we could, you know, we could presumably have one person crew out there, up there, you know, where Lance or the municipal tree specialist would be doing the pruning, and then actually feed the chipper afterwards. So, you know, we'll be okay, but there is some, I mean, we've been using it up till now, we purchased it, I think, you know, three years ago, and it's been operable, it's just that there's a couple of nice additions that this new bucket truck can get us.
Okay. Any other questions, Dave or Eric? In that case, anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors schedule a public hearing on a resolution rescinding the 2020 operating budget for Tuesday, February 18. Second?
Okay. Motion and second to schedule a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Ad Hoc Advisory Board.
Thank you. I'll introduce it, and then I think maybe we have some folks in the audience that are here, I don't know if they're here to just observe or what, but the board adopted the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan in October of last year. It was about a year-long process, largely facilitated by the Center Regional Planning Agency, but involved the formation and several regular meetings of a steering committee that was largely composed of residents of Pine Grove Mills, community stakeholders that were interested in providing their input to the process. But really, once the plan was adopted in October, that was the end of the committee. There has been some interest expressed by some of the members of that group, and I think it's, you know, it's a prudent move as well, in having a committee that could be responsible in an advisory capacity for the implementation of the small area plan. The plan is, you know, you may see if you've read it, is, you know, many pages and full of action steps and objectives that span a variety of different areas, you know, traffic, pedestrian, economic development, environmental, and so on. So there's a lot of moving parts to the plan itself. So in that regard, what I'm recommending that the board consider is the formation of a committee. Now, there's two ways really that the administrative code considers the putting together of a authority board or commission by the Board of Supervisors. Excuse me. The first would be to form a standing committee. Most recently, the board did that with the Tree Commission and the Parks and Recreation Committee. That requires an ordinance amendment. The board has to look at the existing committees that are available, and then make a determination that what's being asked of this group can't be reasonably done by an existing committee. So there's a few kind of subjective criteria that are laid out in the administrative code, and there's an extra process associated with the establishment of the standing committee. Standing committee, as the name implies though, exists until the board decides to, that, you know, it doesn't serve a purpose anymore, or, you know, presumably it would continue to exist. The other option that's available to the board would be to form an ad hoc committee. Ad hoc committees are formed frequently for a specific temporary purpose. So in this case, that temporary word may be stretched quite a bit, but, you know, given that it would take likely many years to see the full implementation of the small area plan. However, it doesn't require an ordinance amendment, there's a little bit less involvement in the governance structure and the formation of that committee. In other words, you know, it might be a little bit less formal of a group, like we have for Ferguson Township's Climate Action Committee, and what we've done with the steering committee for the stormwater fee feasibility analysis. So, you know, really, it's up to the board how you want to proceed, or if you want to proceed with putting this committee together. I met with several interested residents two weeks ago to talk about the process, and it seems like there's interest in serving on that group by the part of some of the committee members that were involved in the formation of the small area plan. What my recommended motion, which is in the agenda tonight, is that the board establish an ad hoc advisory committee or an ad hoc advisory board for the purpose of providing advice and recommendations to the manager and the board on the implementation of the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan. So if that's the action that the board wants to take, you could do so this evening. If you choose to go the route of the standing committee, you would be authorizing an advertisement, or authorizing an amendment to the ordinance. So what I'd probably ask if you're going that direction would be to direct me to prepare a draft, to present back to you, that would then involve authorization of advertisement for public hearings. So a few more steps and a little more process involved in the standing committee. It's my assessment that this can appropriately be handled with an ad hoc advisory board, so that's my recommendation, but however the board wants to proceed is what I'll do.
Thanks. Yeah, because I think this, actually, with several items tonight, where I think we need some board discussion before we are sure which way we want to go. I'm not going to start with the motion. I'm going to go with the discussion and then figure out what we want to do. I guess the first question I would have is, does anyone in the audience here care to address the board regarding the committee? Please.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's a longer walk than it looks. I just wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for taking this time to listen to citizens and really...
Could you identify yourself with the secretary?
I apologize. Matt Heller, Pine Grove Mills, resident, resident. But again, thank you for taking the time to look at, you know, both the idea of establishing the committee for Pine Grove Mills and our community. As you know, as Dave mentioned, you did adopt the small area plan last October, and we thank you for that. So this is really that next step in how do we implement those good plans and efforts that were identified within the document that we've all agreed as citizens are really where we want to see Pine Grove Mills move. With that idea of focusing on the citizens, and Dave, I appreciate you coming out and having the discussion you did two weeks ago, because it really shed a good light on the different opportunities that we have to interact with the board. And the interest right now really seems to be a majority of those that attended the meeting to go with the standing committee. So we're looking to establish, hopefully, the board, I'm sorry, the advisory board as a standing committee. That is the majority right now. So whatever we can do to facilitate that, or discussions, express our interests, and support that, is really kind of the next step that we'd like to take here and really foster discussion across and with the Board of Supervisors. Because you mentioned temporary, and that it would be a stretch for temporary, and temporary is really that ad hoc committee, where we know it's, I used the term two weeks ago, ephemeral, right? It comes and goes, but it's going to be dissolved. Whereas the standing approach is something that we know, this is going to take years to implement, years of us working collaboratively. So why not do it right out of the gate and not have to readdress this, but to give us that voice and that collaboration that we're looking for? And really, we work, and I would see us supporting, you know, well, I'll stop there. But any questions for me? I mean, I don't know if I take questions up here.
Sure. So apart from the naming and the semantics, do you see a difference in what you can do or achieve if it is a standing committee versus an ad hoc committee? And I guess it's a question to you, and then I'll follow it up with Dave.
There are different budgetary approaches, I understand, different topics that come along with that, as well as really engaging with the public. Standing committees, again, please correct me if I'm wrong here, have to be open for the public and, you know, advertised, and meetings have to be known, so we get more community buy-in. We can go ahead and establish things, we can put notes out there, advertisements of things coming up, to bring everybody together and get opinions, to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. So it is that community establishment that comes with a standing board, as I understand it, but I'll defer to Dave or others.
That's a good question, because that was going to be most of my questions to lead in, were going to be about the various distinctions, if really any, so.
Well, from a budget perspective, not much, well, nothing really. I mean, I see Matt's point, but I think, just to clarify, neither standing nor ad hoc committee has any budgetary responsibilities. Your planning commission doesn't have the authorization to spend any money. Both subsets of committees or types of committees could be authorized to make recommendations on certain expenditures, either through the manager or through the board, depending on the amount. So, you know, meaning if this committee were formed in either, you know, in either manner, and they, the prioritization from that committee for a certain capital project was discussed, installation of ornamental streetlights or something like that. Well, that's something that, you know, that would come up through the committee, through me, and then ultimately, depending on the nature of the project, it would go in front of the board. And that, that kind of, you know, dynamic exists irrespective of whether it's ad hoc or standing. The point about advertising, yes, a standing committee, and truly, in really the strictest interpretation of the Sunshine Act, even a ad hoc advisory board would require advertisement. Typically, what we do with our ABCs, I'll use that term, authorities, boards, and commissions, our ABCs are advertised at the beginning of the year, the full schedule, and then that's typically it. I think in either way, you know, we could, for either application, like we do with the Stormwater Fee Committee, and like we've done with the Climate Action Committee, we would make our resources available as we have open to us the ability to post things on our webpage, put stuff out through Constant Contact. You know, by virtue of it being an established committee, either ad hoc or standing, we would be able to help, you know, it would be actually formed by action of the elected officials, so there would be that connection to the municipality. The only other thing that jumps to mind to be, for the board to be mindful of is staffing. I can tell you, I really don't have staff capacity right now to man these or woman these on a regular basis. I don't know that that necessarily helps you with your decision whether to go ad hoc or standing, because I think even if it were an ad hoc group, you know, they would benefit from having a staff member there. But it's something to be considerate of, that while I can certainly make a good faith effort to get somebody to the meetings, you know, our existing planning staff and administrative staffs, and Trees and I are, you know, we have fairly significant after-hour meeting commitments already, that I'd be a little reluctant to say definitively that we have somebody there at every single meeting. I mean, it depends on how much. That may be okay, sometimes that might run into issues. Oftentimes, committees like this, committees of volunteers, benefit from staff guidance, both in terms of what is and is not feasible, but also maybe some technical considerations that they, that aren't apparent to, you know, a group of volunteers trying to, you know, implement a plan like this. So I can say that we'll, you know, make every effort to get to meetings, but I wouldn't set the expectation that I can dedicate a staff person to be at all of these.
In either case, or are you more...
Frankly, in either case, yeah. I mean, I think if it were a standing committee, I would prioritize it more highly to get somebody there. And, you know, that's just a personal, professional opinion.
And so I'll follow it up on, you said there would be more community buy-in. Why does the name get you more community buy-in?
Not so much the name, but the idea of the advertising, the fact that when you hear standing committee as opposed to ad hoc, you know, just those two words compared, you say, okay, ad hoc, yeah, that comes and goes, maybe it exists tomorrow, maybe it doesn't. But when you see standing, it does carry more weight, I believe, with the community. And we've had community events before, actually held in this very room, where many community members, you know, voiced their opinions and gave us some really good requirements for what we were looking to do in Pine Grove Mills. So we know it can expand, so why not put the name behind it, especially because we know it's not going to be temporary, but many years in the making.
Thank you so much, and I just wanted to follow up with a few more questions. Dave, you did a great job of hitting all of the questions on my list to try to distinguish the difference between ad hoc and standing. And then I think there's only two perhaps that I have left, that would be the number of members of the committee and how often they meet. Are there any requirements for a standing committee that don't exist for an ad hoc in terms of that, or would that be completely up to the board when we establish either of those committees?
I think if you were establishing a standing committee, you would want to specify in the ordinance language what that committee structure would look like. Is it five members, is it seven members? There would be a formal appointment process by the Board of Supervisors, and there would be terms tied to that, which you see with all, you know, virtually all of our other authorities, boards, and commissions, or ABCs. So you would have, you know, opportunity to accept applications, review candidate qualifications, and then, you know, make your determination about, you know, who should and should not be, or who would be or would not be appointed to those committees, or to that kind of committee. The other question about how frequently they meet, I believe that there's no requirement, and we, I can double-check that, but if you think about our existing ABCs, for example, the Tax Review Board, I mean, you talk about ephemeral, you know, they haven't been in, you know, almost, you know, over 10 years. So, you know, they don't meet regularly. The Industrial Commercial Development Authority typically convene annually just to do reorganizational matters unless there's a topic of business, but we don't, we don't meet with any regularity. So I don't think there's anything specific that would apply uniquely to one or the other with respect to the frequency of having to meet, but I do think you'd have to give more consideration to structure if it were a standing group.
And when you say consideration, you're meaning just really laying that out, so it's spelled out in the code? And then I do have one follow-up question with that. Do you know, it has been suggested to me that it is possible to do a range of appointees for a standing committee, like in the administrative code, say, five to seven. I see some difficulty with that in terms of determining your quorum and that kind of thing, but do you know if that is something that is possible, or do you, would you want a firm number if it did end up being standing in the code?
Um, I...
Sorry.
No, it's okay, I'm just thinking through the points. I think, you know, you would, whether it were like a range, you know, five to seven, I mean, certainly, you know, you're going to go with the applicants that you have, it's not uncommon for us to have vacancies that go unfilled. So if you set it at seven, but it turns out you only have five, that may be problematic for the definition of a quorum, but a quorum, if it were five, is going to be three, if it's seven, it's going to be four, and, you know, you wouldn't necessarily want an even number, but, you know, worse things have happened. I don't expect this group will have many split votes, but there's always that possibility.
Sure.
So I think your quorum would fluctuate with the number of boards, but, or the number of people you'd put on the board.
Thanks.
And I have a question for the chair about process. So I could talk about, kind of building on what Matt has talked about in terms of what I think perhaps would be the best route forward, or I could make a motion, or we could obviously have other questions.
I'd like to go with any other questions that anybody would have for Dave before we move with the motion. So if anybody has any other questions about...
But you would want a motion before we start discussion at this point?
No, not necessarily.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I think, for this, this item, like I said, tonight, there's several items, I think the discussion can... I, for this, this item, like I said, tonight, there's several items. I, I think the discussion can proceed a motion, because the discussion will lead us toward which one should have been.
Excellent. I wasn't sure if it was just question, discussion, or actual discussion.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I just kind of, I, my first thought is, is, and I really don't, I apologize. I haven't lived in State College long enough to understand a lot of the particulars of communities within Ferguson Township, but, so if you became a standing committee as the Pine Grove Mills small area plan committee?
Yeah.
That's cute. Then, then to say, like, perhaps if Overlook Heights, where I live, we started a thing, then does that start to get territorial if we all have our own standing committees? And isn't that kind of divisive of what we're trying to blend?
I think that's a good question, and I've thought a little bit about that because I've been discussing kind of this concept and how it would fit into our structure. And so one thing I know that we have, we, in the small area plan group, we talked about several things. We talked about the model of a neighborhood association. We talked about the model of like a village association, like a downtown, Bellefonte Downtown Incorporated, State College Downtown. So various models were looked at, and I think that really the concept would be a village association type of concept, but it was, it would be a standing committee to implement this particular plan. Now, you talk about Overlook Heights, and we did a plan for a mobility study adjacent to Overlook Heights. I think the difference between that plan and the relationship between Overlook Heights and then this plan and the relationship from the concept of this committee is that this plan, it's more than just a transit plan. It's an entire community plan. And so when I thought about the model of homeowner associations, and it, I could be, maybe stand corrected on that, typically they represent the residents of a neighborhood opinion on like what it is to have a residential neighborhood there. This is kind of broader. It's more of a strategic plan of the township for a subsection of the township. So the answer would be, I wouldn't think that Overlook Heights per se would necessarily end up with a small area plan, but what, based on our Ward-based system, I could see something similar where this is the village in our Ward One, and, you know, we're looking at the Terrace Streetscape District and what's going on in Two, and then your Area Three. Like, conceptually, perhaps, there would be an evolution of an advocacy group that would be part of the structure of the township that would have a companion plan that would be adopted by the township. So maybe, right? May, maybe. And I don't think that it would necessarily, I mean, I think that if it grew kind of organically out of the development of the township, which is really how this plan grew, there was a lot of things, like because it's an older neighborhood, it was like pre-sidewalk laws, and, you know, a lot of things that are in these newer neighborhoods, like they don't have. So it was kind of organically growing, and I would imagine that there would be other areas, like maybe the Ward Two area and the Blaine on West College, and that, so I could see it being a model, yes.
But I think at this point, we, we need to decide just on this one, because we don't have other small area plans.
That's true.
I guess what I was saying, because I was a little nervous, like, is it inspiring? I mean, it is, and it is inspiring. And does it then inspire other neighborhoods that are like, oh, wow, look what they did?
Yes.
And particularly as we have, that everybody starts to?
Yeah. If, if I could just maybe add to the conversation, I think what's unique about the Pine Grove Mills small area plan is its multiple neighborhoods. It's not just the village, but it's neighborhoods that, you know, above the village that are, folks have been coming out to, you know, join the conversation and everything. So we have that going for us. We also, looking for the board's support, we have two, you know, Route 26 and 45 go right through the middle of Pine Grove Mills. In fact, it was great this summer when, you know, Representative, I'm sorry, Mr. Benninghoff came out, and we were talking about some of the speeding issues, and you heard some folks, you know, step on the gas as they were going by the naked egg, and we went, wow, well, there's some of the issue right now. So we have all these different things where us as a gateway community with that major road going through are also trying to do the right thing from streetscapes and, and other things to make it a safe community. We're having crosswalk conversations right now. I think there was even an agenda item to talk about that this evening. So it, it really encompasses so much more than a single neighborhood or a single interest group, but really the entire community, which is why it is so special. And Dave, if I could just add to your, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know if we were finished with that topic. I just wanted to make.
Well, building on that, I think conceptually with Overlook Heights and the Northland Mobility Plan, which a little subsection of this was actually modeled off of that, I think that what Matt's saying, like if you're looking at, in here, we talk about the different neighborhoods of Pine Grove Mills. So if you're looking at Ward Three, you're looking at Overlook Heights as being one of those neighborhoods that would be in Pine Grove Mills. Again, that would be jumping ahead, but conceptually, yes, I could see that occurring, and I could see it being good, a good thing, to have those plans to guide groups within the subsections of the township.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had actually a couple of questions for Dave. Basically on the difference between these and some of the implications of, kind of, really. The first is, you sort of touched on, does the Sunshine Act apply either case? Because if you don't have advertised, or do you have to have advertised meetings for either one of them?
Yeah, so the, the gen, the, the strict interpretation of the Sunshine Act would mean that any group that's making decisions, even in an advisory capacity to the elected officials ought to be advertised.
Right. Well, I, I guess my question is, what's the difference between ought to be and must be?
I had a little question mark there. I said probably and yes for that one.
You know, and that's, that's where.
I would say, I would say yes, either, in this case, either one.
So you can't just have the community group say, hey, let's get together Sunday and talk about this item?
Well, sure, they could, but they wouldn't be acting as such in an advisory capacity.
But if you get a quorum of them together, are they? That, that's where my question comes in. We can't get a quorum of the board together to discuss an item would be an agenda item normally for us. Be correct.
And that's also true for the Planning Commission and this and the Tree Commission. But they could do subcommittees groups of two or whatever is less than a pair.
Right. But, but I mean, I think people need to be aware of that, that if we form a committee of either sort, it sounds like, if you are going to meet and discuss these things, you have to advertise it. You have to keep notes. They don't have to be extensive, but there has to be a record.
Right.
And that sort of thing. But there's not a difference between the two types of committees in that, then?
I, I do not believe so.
Okay. And that's, I mean, you would be the one administering that as a, yeah, okay.
That would, I think that's important to know.
I think it is important to know.
And the other question that I would have is, if we establish an advisory board tonight, who's on it? Or who decides who's on it? If we have a, we establish a standing committee, we will interview people and make appointments. Does that apply to an ad hoc committee? Because I don't think we did that with the Climate Action. I think.
It was just.
Yeah, it just sort of became formed, and I'm not. So I, I guess the process question I have is, can we really establish that tonight? Or is there more to it than?
I think the way, well, it's up to the board. I think the way that the board is, has historically handled ad hoc committees has been to allow the, the committee themselves to, you know, kind of do their membership. That's what we do with the Climate Action Committee.
Right.
So we have a couple of new faces on there that joined us recently. It kind of rotates a little bit where, you know, there might be a member that comes in and is there for a particular interest item, or, and then they, you know, may rotate off. It's a little bit less formal of an, of an appointment process. At least, as I said, that's what's been done oftentimes in the past. Now, with the Stormwater Committee, and Dave, you correct me if I'm wrong here, I believe the board had an opportunity to review the candidates, and I don't know whether formal action was ever created or taken to appoint that group, but at least that.
With the, with the Stormwater Advisory Committee, the board authorized staff to make the appointments.
Okay. So then there you go. So I mean, so that would, that could be, you know, that would be something that, if that were the direction the board wanted to go.
So let me, could I clarify a point right there, though? So Steve's question was about the appointment process, and I think we discovered that for standing committees, the board appoints.
The board makes the appointments for a set term.
Right. So, but for ad hoc, you were talking about kind of a rotating, like, oh, they're welcoming, they're coming in, which sounds nice. But then Dave said, staff appoints. So does that kind of welcoming in process mean that staff's doing the appointment? It's just like you don't have to wait for the board meeting and so on and so forth? Or does it mean that the committee itself is doing that process of bringing people in?
Well, I think both in different applications. In the case of the Stormwater Advisory Committee, we individually identified, we identified roles that we wanted to fill as part of that group, so different stakeholders and interest groups and things like that. We identified individuals that we either knew or recommended to us that we were familiar with, and that's how we formed that committee generally. The Climate Action Committee is much less of a, of a, like, formalized process in the sense that, you know, Pam Adams, for example, was not, was probably our most recent appointee to that group. And it's just a, there wasn't, in that case, even action taken by the committee to appoint that individual. It's just, she's the sustainability for regional planning. She sits on, on the committee. And in that case, we take notes, but it's not formal minute process. Like, it's a much less ceremonious, I think, process.
We, we've had a, a number of other, you know, smaller, short-term committees. We did it for the mobility study on North Atherton Street. We had a committee that was set up for the West College Avenue, you know, streetscape.
That's right.
There is, there's a lot of small committees that come and go that are project-specific, that are ad hoc, that are filled with members, you know, that, that either the staff or the board appoint, and meet for a specific purpose, and then, and then they're done. You know, the, the Stormwater Advisory Committee is a little bit more formal in that regard, and we have consultants, and we have minutes, and, you know, presentations and whatnot. But some of the smaller committees, you know, have any of that, other than maybe someone taking notes.
So I guess I'll just then talk a little bit about why I thought standing, based on the process of the small area plan. This discussion of appointment makes me think a little bit about like that less formal structure, and maybe that perhaps being advantageous, but I don't think that necessarily appointment process of the board would be a problem either. But I think that one of the reasons why, and I'll go back to what your, your question was, which I think is a really good question, why kind of the idea of the standing committee kind of is what's lingering with me, is because really what we discussed during the process was the formation of a community association. And so as we were moving through this process and discussing the vehicle that would move this agenda forward, in our minds was the idea of a community, a village association or a community association. And when one thinks of that, one doesn't think, oh, I'm going to make this village association to do this one thing, and then it's going to dissolve. It's, it's an association that is stable and, and an organization for folks to join that is stable in the community, that just happens to have a really, really nice blueprint to move forward. So the reason why I'm still kind of in that space of standing committee is because of the nature of the plan and how that body was discussed as we moved forward. And if you look in this plan, it's actually like the very first recommendation is to make this body to move this plan forward. Then the last piece of why I'm kind of still in this standing space is, here in the township, we have a strategic plan, and we revise it about every five years. That's a plan, and we hope to get those things done, as we hope to get these things done, but we also acknowledge that that plan is never going away. That strategic plan is a plan for the township that will be amended, and things are checked off, and it'll be changed, but it's always going to be a document that guides us. And that is what I also kind of think of as this plan. Like, right now, it's this plan with this agenda, and it's, but it's going to change and be amended, and I don't see the need for a plan like this to go away. I think in Ferguson Township, we're going to continue to see growth, pressure for growth. And I think that this, this, knowing that that is our population center of the township currently, it's the highest deaths population center of the township, having a plan and having a standing committee to represent that section of the township is, is probably the best way to go. But that's, so that's really why I'm still in that space.
And if I might be able to add to that, too. And it sounds like, historically speaking, from what Mr. Modrucker had just stated, that the idea that the ad hocks deliver something, an analysis, and they go away. Well, Laura, to your point, this is much longer than that, and really made up of multiple projects that we would see over the years. Where you could, for instance, you know, have a little, have a group that, you know, adjudicates or works through something, and then they go away. But this is really all encompassing for the future. So I, that's the way I look at it, at least. And I get to have the same discussion at the university. We're going through that, too, right now, so.
Thanks for coming and sharing those thoughts, because I think that adds a lot to the discussion, because you're bringing the perspective of the community members who came to the group. And I think, like Laura said, one of the items in the plan was to establish a group, whatever that may be, to get the plan done. But not only to get the plan done and implemented, but to have a voice with the township. And the plan is not only just, is not only, you know, fixing roads and streetscape plans, but it's ongoing activities. You know, more community events and things like that, that are not just a do it and check it off the list. They're more ongoing types of things. And if you look at the implementation chart of action steps we created, there's so many different bodies that are tasked with different things. So the township, the residents, Pendot is in there. So throughout the process, what I heard from staff and Jim May, who was a great guy from CRPA to help us put the plan together, and the residents, was that, you know, it was going to be a very long-term collaborative effort where residents would continue to be involved with staff and make this a vibrant community. And so that lent me toward thinking about having this as a standing committee, because the plan is an ongoing thing.
Forever.
Right. And just the, you know, the actual traffic and those types of improvements that were recommended could be a decade in the making, because they're massive types of things. The flashing yellow lights are the biggest ones. So that, you know, having a, a standing committee that would allow the village residents to have a direct line of communication with the township was, and with the board, was one of the ideas in the plan. So I want whatever is best for the village, and we'll make the plan come to fruition. So, you know, whatever is best is what I will support. But that's kind of what I came in thinking, this seems like it should be a standing committee, because it's not going to go anywhere for a long time. So that's, that's kind of where I was at coming into it.
I guess I would ask Dave, because I do value his opinion, and I know, Dave, you said in the meeting and in emails with me, that you really could go either direction, and it's 100% up to the board. But is there something that really inspired you to say, when you were making the agenda, ad hoc versus standing? Because, you know, there's so many similarities. And based on the information that was conveyed about residents' preference for standing and kind of the nature of the organization that we brainstormed about through the process, it kind of like, it really keeps leading me in that standing direction. Is there something that stopped you from going in that direction?
Well, maybe not one thing specifically. I think I've touched on a few of them in, in my intro. I think, you know, the other challenge, I mean, I think, you know, we're, we're getting kind of bogged down in semantics. I think either way is able to accomplish the goals of the small area plan. I don't think that being ad hoc versus, I respectfully disagree with Matt then. I don't think that it, that being ad hoc versus standing delegitimizes the group or makes it somehow have less of a, you know, stature in the community. They're, they're going to be acknowledged and recognized as a, as an ad hoc committee, and they're going to have the advisory capacity that they have. In, in any event, I think either is considered a, an agency by the definition of the Sunshine Act. So there's requirements for advertisement. Mr. Miller's points about, you know, the meeting and discussion of business by less than a quorum is, is, or when you have a quorum present, those are things that would be prohibited under, either way. that would be prohibited under, either way. The one thing that, you know, I just would at least advise you to give some thought to, if you're moving towards the standing committee, which kind of sounds like that may be the direction, is, um, don't overlook the, um, component of the administrative code that says you can't establish a committee unless you determine that an existing committee cannot serve that function. So, give thought, I mean, the Planning Commission, for example, has an established role in the municipality's planning code for the recommendations and advice toward the implementation of comprehensive plans and official maps. And so, there's a land use component to the Small Area Plan. There's other things that are considered in there as well. But you have other committees too. You have a Parks and Recreation Committee, and you have a Tree Commission. And so, you have an existing, um, you know, advisory body, or, or set of advisory bodies that can take on responsibilities that are connected to this plan. If it's in your opinion or your assessment that, that cannot be feasibly done by an existing authority board or commission, then maybe standing committee is, is the way you wanna go. And that's a subjective standard. That's up to you all as, as the policymakers. So, I don't think, as I said, I don't, I mean, I'm not, you're not, you know, whatever, whatever you decide, that's what I'm gonna do.
Thanks. Thanks, I appreciate that. Because I did, I actually read through the MPC for the Planning Commission, because I saw in our code, refer back to MPC, and, you know, I read all the directives of all of the various bodies, and I think that they would, as I believe we even noted in some of the partners, play like a little subsection supporting role to this committee. The comprehensive nature of this is sort of like, once you pieced and parted out everything to the various committees, there would still be leftover parts, and it would actually be so severed that it would no longer kind of be a comprehensive plan. So, I, I hear what you're saying about that, and I did review those kind of charges to make sure that there was nothing in the Planning Commission that was so comprehensive that included things like getting documents printed for the Historical Society and establishing the museum and that kind of stuff. So, um, thank you for that clarification, though.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, uh, make one comment on, sort of picking up on something you said. I don't have any strong feeling over the other on how we do this.
Okay.
But I think my impression is, and this may or may not be right, that an ad hoc committee is closer to the Neighborhood Association type idea that you were talking about, in that it's not the formal structure if you have five or seven people. I mean, you do, but it's a little more flexible in terms of who's part of it. Neighborhood Association, everybody's part of it. A standing committee, you have certain people designated by the board who are on the committee, and they can take information or, you know, discussion with anybody they want to, but the decisions are formally made on the basis of those people that we appointed, which I think is less.
I think ad hoc is the same way too, but the rotation is sometimes less.
Yeah, I think it's a little more flexible in rotation.
Yeah.
That, that's all that I'm thinking about, yeah.
With quorum, yeah.
Right.
It's like barely, it's like a little bit of a nuance.
Right. But I don't have, I don't have a strong feeling over the other on that. Just that was, my, my impression of how the committees have worked is that the ad hoc is a little less formal structured, so.
I personally would like to move, because I don't hear any strong opposition from the chair or the manager. I think I would like to move forward, that we establish a standing committee. Um, and I know that Dave, uh, uh, motion to draft the parameters of a standing committee and eventually authorize the advertisement of a public hearing, so I would include that. I guess I'm gonna make that motion, because I don't hear any opposition to it.
So, does that work as a motion, Dave? To cover the things you need to have?
I, I got the, uh.
Okay. Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for the time.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is a donation request, Central Pennsylvania Fourth Fest. And we have Frank Savino, he's the executive director.
Good evening.
Gotcha, I gotta, I gotta warm it up yet, if I, one second.
I'll tell you what, you've got some slides.
We, we sort of ended abruptly on you there, Dave.
That's okay.
I had to wrap it up.
Actually gave you copies of the slides, they'll be in front of you, so if you want to refer to those, we can get started. So, good evening, my name is Frank Savino, I'm the executive director of Fourth Fest. Uh, resident of Ferguson Township for twenty-five years, it'll be twenty-sixth this July first. I assumed the role of the executive director in the fall of two thousand and eighteen. Our family's attended Fourth Fest every year since our first invite. We moved in like, on July first, and our brain in the neighborhood said, come to the fireworks place. And so, that's how we got started. And then in two thousand and thirteen, I started volunteering with Fourth Fest due to thirty-one words. And you all said that earlier tonight, when you stood up and said the pledge. So, now, I was a scout master in two thousand and thirteen, I went to Fourth Fest and said, you have a great event, but you're missing thirty-one words. And would you consider we do the pledge of allegiance right before the National Anthem when everybody stands up? And they said, great, you're in charge. And I, that year also, scouting was a hundred years old, and I said, so the first year, I would like to see scouts lead the pledge in front of the whole audience. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, Brownies, um, and we had twelve of them up in front of the whole VIP section that led the pledge. So, from there on, I got moved on, so. All right, let's see.
Is that working?
No. No, just... So, you can go to the next one. I knew, see, I knew this how it was gonna work. That's right. So, we are a five-oh-one, C-three nonprofit, it was organized to celebrate and commemorate the birth of our nation. This is an all-volunteer organization from the community that organizes and manages the event. And that's pretty remarkable, we have five hundred volunteers that pull this off. People say to me, what about the fireworks? Those are volunteers. For organizing the run, those are volunteers. Um, everything in the, that we do that day is all volunteers. So, can you go to the next one? So, there's really three factors I look at and say, that in order for us to host this event. First, monetary sponsor contributions of organizations like Ferguson Township around any other organizations. This represents about a third of our fiscal budget, um, those monetary contributions. The second is in-kind contributions. If you take our total fiscal budget, fifty percent more on top of that is, um, items that are donated to us in-kind, like fencing around the security areas, lighting towers, generators, vehicles, meals for the volunteers that are setting everything up. And I could go on, but that, it's a big number for us. And the third is the five hundred volunteers. A couple pictures there, you see people setting shelves, the other was a group that helped organize the, uh, run. But it's, it's a great event, and again, with the volunteers, we need this. Go ahead, I think the next one, yeah. So, we draw people from all across the community, the county, across the country. A report received from Airbnb said guests reported they were from a total of thirteen countries, twenty-four U.S. states, seventy-six cities around the world. Go to the next one, I think. That'll show around Pennsylvania, just some of the ticket sales, and how we draw people in. Pretty remarkable. We appreciated the donation last year of a thousand dollars, uh, from Ferguson Township, but I'm here today to ask Ferguson Township, consider increasing the contribution to Fourth Fest to twenty-five hundred dollars, and potentially make this part of the annual budget, if that's possible, uh, similar to the other townships, is how they handle this annual donation. This amount is very much in line with the other, with Patton Township, College Township, The Borough. In addition, the other, to monetary sponsorships from these others, we get things like permitting, closing of streets, personnel assistance, and lots of other resources to help pull this event off. So, why am I asking for the increase? As with everything, expenses have increased. The one item that has jumped considerably is our cost of security. Um, over the past five years, those costs have gone from roughly ten thousand dollars to forty-three thousand dollars. The parade route is now blocked at all entrances for vehicles, for the safety of the crowds and participants. Um, and this is just one change we had to make in the event. We can no longer say it's not gonna happen here. So, we take security very seriously from two weeks before till even after the event's over. So, other costs have also increased, costs of fireworks, rental equipment, security barriers, printing costs, advertising. But this event is called out, um, like the Washington Post this past year, said we were one of the top six unique Fourth of July celebrations in the nation. So, any increase would certainly be appreciated, so my appeal to you is be a sponsor for Fourth Fest in the amount of the twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, with sponsorships can come VIP tickets for parking and viewing, which you're welcome to share with your employees, uh, and their families. I'm assuming almost everybody here's probably been over to Fourth Fest or watched fireworks, so. You know, it's a great day to celebrate, and as a community, we're very fortunate to be able to host this. You can go on, hold it there, I guess. So, what's next for us? So, there are some exciting times. This year, event, we've had some regional bands, we may have a local musician that was been recognized nationally. And the fireworks, we just, our board just passed us this last Friday, uh, kind of giving a perspective, we're gonna take the fireworks show to world-class. I tell people, we're not gonna be in the top ten anymore. I wanna be the number one, or be some of the best in the world. As an example, our frontage on our current show is about three hundred feet, we're gonna take that to eight hundred feet. And the other thing we're gonna do this year, for the first time, we're gonna move all the VIP viewing inside the Spike Stadium. And part of that is to get on board and save the Spikes. But we think just that venue itself is really gonna be a much better experience for the crowds. Appreciate you listening to me, I think there's one more on there, and, um, I don't went through that, you go to the end. Any questions for me? Or about Fourth Fest in general?
So, is there somewhere I can, in, in general, I'm supportive of the Fourth Fest and so on, but as a matter of governance, I would like to see when we are donating money, uh, is there somewhere your budget or an overview of the budget available that I could see?
I can, yeah, I can bring that into you. I mean, our budget's approximately, cash budget's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but the items and how it's, you know, where is the money being spent?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
How, you know, how is the money, what money is spent?
Ask.
I, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
In terms of the funding, you also have ticket sales, how much is a ticket? I, I don't, I haven't gone to the Fourth Fest for quite some time, so I don't know.
Well, there are a couple different types, but just the individual tickets. The VIP viewing is twenty-five dollars per ticket.
Okay.
Parking, VIP parking was twen-
Make a brief comment?
Sure.
So, um, the township has twelve thousand dollars budgeted for community contributions, and you'll see most of the requests, well, that, you'll see all the requests tonight that I have, uh, currently, but I expect we'll get one or two more before the end of the year. We always get requests to sponsor, um, an ice sculpture at First Night, for example. People's Choice and Arts Fest typically ask us for a sponsorship, um, and there's one other that I'm missing. Oh, um, we have, you, historically used this account for flowers at the, um, Shingle Town College Avenue intersection that's maintained by the Ferguson Township Garden Club. So, there's, you know, a few things here that you probably will see later on, but, um, there, the township has a policy that was adopted last year, a donation policy, um, that kind of governs a little bit how these, how these requests are made. Typically, those requests are capped at a thousand dollars, so the ones that you'll see on the consent agenda through that process, to this evening, are, you know, that, that's kind of how that policy applies. But because, um, you know, uh, Mr. Savino is asking for, you know, substantially more than that, go to twenty-five hundred dollars, and the next presentation you'll hear is asking it, so that too, thought it'd be, you know, more appropriate for them to come and talk a little bit about what they're asking for, for the board, if you desire to move forward with it, you know, to take action separately, other than through the consent agenda process. So, there is money in the budget for all of these things, and, you know, if the board were to approve everything this evening, there would still be a thirty-five hundred dollars left in the budget for future additional requested donations from now until the end of, of, you know, the fiscal year. But that just gives you a little context about why you're seeing this.
Do you know what the other municipalities give to this?
Um, between two thousand and twenty-five hundred for the other three municipalities are in our immediate neighborhoods, so that's, uh, State College Borough is at twenty-five hundred, and I believe Patton and College are both at two thousand.
Yeah, should the Borough just raise their thirty-two fifty?
Oh, okay.
For twenty-twenty.
The Borough's in, in a little bit more. I, I don't know about Harris or Half Moon.
For the five hundred dollars.
Okay. Five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you. Moon also?
Half Moon, uh, the question?
I don't believe we have anything on that.
Okay, thanks.
So, being my first year, getting out and asking.
Excellent, love that attitude.
I'm okay with this amount, I think. I, particularly when you said the cost of the security is increasing like it has. I don't wanna make it a standing amount.
Okay.
I also agree with that, I do not want to make it a standing budget, rotate like, just, I don't know. Yeah, you agree with not making it standing?
Yeah. If we made it two, we'd be doubling our contribution from last year, so that would also, I would also be comfortable.
I, I think, my, my feeling would be two thousand, uh, would be, I'd be okay with that. I, I have a problem with fireworks, is the general thing, considering them somewhat a, you know, yes, they're a nice flash, but I think they're also fairly wasteful of resources, that, you know, the, the fireworks show as such. And that part of, that is an essential part of what Fourth Fest is, is the fireworks show. I mean, there are all the other things that you've mentioned, but really, the key thing that is to draw in, on the other hand, it's really popular. A lot of our citizens love it.
Two thousand would be doubling our contribution in previous years. So, it's significant.
Yeah, so, when you talk about some of the other events, like, take the run in the morning. We have almost a thousand people that participate in the four K, the four-mile run. The parade, which is, this will be the ninth year, we will bring about fifteen thousand people along the parade route. And how do I know that? We pass out little flags to all the kids. And I know when we run out of those, and we bought ten thousand last year, there is at least one parent with the children. So, our count, you know, for us to bring people into the community and fill the beds and have them go to meals and things like that, is a good number. And the entertainment we do from, from four to about eight o'clock is another huge draw. So, we really look at the day as four elements. But you're right, it's capped off by the fireworks, yeah.
I appreciate you coming in and talking with us about this, uh, decision. I guess one thing that's usually important to me, always important to me, as a supervisor of Ferguson Township, is to make sure that Ferguson Township residents can participate, um, fully in whatever activity we're helping to fund or to support. And so, I'm, I'm elected by Ward One, which is the more rural area of Ferguson Township, um, although I represent, like others, all of the township, but have a special ear for their concerns or, um, so I just wanted, I know there's no way you can track, you know, how many folks from Ferguson participate, so I kind of wanted to hear from Patty, what you thought of your neighborhood, like, are they participating in the Fourth Fest and whatnot? So, really, my only reservation with being all-in on this is that a significant amount of our township is pretty far removed from that, and I'm not too sure that they necessarily participate, as maybe some other areas do.
Yeah, it'd be interesting if you drive down Nixon Road and see the families that are sitting out there watching the fireworks.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I know they do.
Yeah, yeah.
Personal friends with a lot of those, and you go to some of the other remote areas, where people like, I just go to the top of, uh, Tussie and watch the fireworks from there, or top of Pine Grove. I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot, yes, right there at the epicenter, but with the number of people we bring into this community, and the economic piece of it too.
I appreciate that, yeah, I do, I do.
We watch it from the, uh, where, where the air quality station used to be, you know, we just go back there in those hills.
Nice, nice.
And it's, there's a ton of us there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Sure. You know, it's a fun job, I get to talk about July fourth every day. Yeah, you think about it, right?
Yeah, um, yeah, my, my thing is, I would have loved to see where the money is being spent to make an informed decision, uh, and if it is being spent on the runs and the meals and other things that, uh, perhaps would be more supportive, I'm fine with two thousand.
Go with two thousand.
Yeah, for two thousand, twenty-five hundred, sounds like we're bringing it toward two thousand.
Yes.
And it seems like it consensus here, so, a motion.
I move that we allocate $2,000 of our community donation fund to this year's Central Pennsylvania Fourth Fest. I'll second.
Motion, I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a donation request from Discovery Space. Michelle Crowell is the executive director, is here.
Before Michelle starts, can, may I just make a comment on the standing allocation kind of discussion, because this may come up with Michelle's presentation? Just to, just, and this, it's up to the board if you want to revisit that or, you know, stay with past practice, but recall that in the presentation of the 2020 budget, the board, at the time, last year's board, made a conscious decision to, we used to itemize these things out in the budget. So, we used to say, you know, Fourth Fest, $1,000, this, you know, this amount. That was consciously removed by the board at the end of last year to leave this open pot of money available and consider specific requests based on merit. So, at least last year's board decided that that was, that those standing commitments were something that they weren't interested in continuing.
Right.
But that's not to say you couldn't change, but that's at least where we left it.
Right.
I got the presentation, I know I got it.
That's okay.
And your clicker should work, because it's a PowerPoint.
Okay. It's only literally two slides and they're just pictures.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's, well, three if you count the, that, you can flip to the next one. So, thank you for having me. My name's Michelle Crowell. I'm the executive director of Discovery Space and as of November, I'm a Ferguson Township president, which is exciting. So, in mid-2017, we relocated to Ferguson Township from the Borough. We wanted a larger space and we found one right along Atherton. So, when we opened the Atherton location, if you haven't been ever or in a while, that's the inside of our exhibit gallery, we opened with three full-time employees in 2017. We now are about to hire our eighth full-time employee, so we are expanding as an organization. We moved to the larger facility. We used to see a visitorship yearly of 18,000 visits. We are now above 30,000 visits each year. Visits because we have members who come regularly, so I can't say they're unique visitors. The final statistic I'd like to share with you is memberships. So, Ferguson Township in Center County, Ferguson Township actually has the highest number of family members who come to Discovery Space. We have about 175 families who are members of our space. Along with that, 30% of our members are from outside of Center County. So, we are drawing from nine counties surrounding us who come to visit, who then eat at a restaurant and shop in our stores, or come for a field trip and their parents come back. Our biggest advocate are kids. So, a lot of parents use us in negotiations for going to Giant, right? I'll give you 30 minutes at Discovery Space and then you promise to behave in Giant as our next step. We regularly hear moms and dads negotiating. But, so, we are an asset, an asset to the community. We know that there are companies who are using us as leverage for, you want to bring your family to State College, look at all the things that we can offer and Discovery Space is one of those conversations. I have also a meeting on Thursday with a spouse of a university person that is being recruited to talk about all that we do. The wife is interested in nonprofits. We also believe that we're an asset, because we provide science and engineering education opportunities outside of the school day. So, evenings, weekends, all summer long, we have opportunities for kids and families to learn together in our space. And even dentists have told us that they have kids, their patients have been promised to go to Discovery Space if they sit still in the chair. And parents who have children with winter birthday parties, or winter birthdays, we can host the parties and clean up the mess afterwards. So, we have 5,000 square feet of exhibit space that is really for families with kids ages six months to 14 years old. We see a lot of children learning to walk in our space, which is very exciting for us. But what we had happen recently, and recently in the past year or so, is the 14-year-olds at the end of summer are turning to us and saying, "I'm going to be 15 next year, what are you going to do for me?" So, we're answering that challenge. Actually, tomorrow, we open up a new portion of our building to the public. So, we have been working for the last two years to create a community makerspace. A makerspace is a workshop with shared tools that brings community members together to either build projects or consult, advise other people on projects and share hobbies and interests. We are calling it The Rivet. We threw a soft-launch party last weekend and then this, this previous weekend, we had some classes going for our members and people that were interested. So, we have a number of audiences that we've identified who will use a makerspace like this. But one in particular that I think you might be interested in is entrepreneurs. So, oftentimes, there are people at Penn State starting businesses, students, just as they graduate. And as soon as they graduate, they lose access to all of those resources. We also have a number, the energy, the entrepreneurial energy in this community in general is, is active, but there's no place to prototype, right? So, we have offers for, we can help you write a business plan or things like that, and now, we have equipment that people can use to prototype. So, we have, well, you can sort of see, we've got 3D printing capabilities, we have electronics, we have jewelry, we have a sign shop, which includes a laser cutter and a number of other things. The next step of this is to build out the woodworking and metalworking and welding shop so that we can truly be, if you want to start a business and you need a place to prototype, instead of sending your plans for a prototype overseas, which often happens, paying a lot of money to do it, you can try it locally in our space. There's nowhere like it around that's doing this and imagine all the businesses that could be started right in Ferguson Township. So, we have been, we open tomorrow, but we've been having these conversations for two years and we have partnerships with CPI and South Hills and the Center Region Entrepreneur Network is looking to make this potentially a home for them, because they don't currently have a home. And so, we hope that you'll consider supporting us. We did put a proposal in and we are asking for $5,000 of support. We are asking for that over three years. I understand that may not be an option tonight, but we, with the increased number of people coming into our building and now with an increased age range, so we're truly a lifelong learning facility in Ferguson Township, we need some extra help keeping up with all of the, the parking lot, the sidewalks, keep them safe during the winter, to keep our common areas clear, do some upgrades with security is another aspect of that as well. And so, the $5,000 will go a long way to helping with those things. I'm happy to take questions about any of this. Thank you for your time.
Questions from the board?
So, are you aware of the Invent and State program?
Yes.
Since you mentioned entrepreneurship?
Mm-hmm.
To the extent that I know, they support any Pennsylvania resident with respect to the business plan and legal plan?
Yes, but no prototyping facilities.
So, what type of prototyping facilities or states are equipped to provide here?
So, a lot of prototypes can be made, their first or alpha prototype can be 3D printed to be able to showcase that to a potential funder. We, when we get the woodworking and metalworking, we've got increased capabilities, but the laser cutter, the electronics, if you're making circuitry for something, is really useful. The jewelry station has very small components, whether you're making jewelry or not, a repair for metal and things like that that you might use. Got a pottery studio and a textile arts area, depends on what prototype you're doing. But there's a lot of places, the core goal is to make things, right? Get teens off of their cellphones potentially and have them make things with their hands. And for entrepreneurs, it gives them equipment that might be too expensive to own or they only need one time for a project, that we incur the cost of owning it and then we share it with everybody.
And is there a fee, what is, to use it?
Yes, yeah, so there'll be, you could have a day pass, which is just come in one time. You could buy a membership and there are different tiers of memberships. Maybe you want five days per month, 10 days per month, 15 days per month, and then there's unlimited.
And those fees are not covering your costs?
So, this is new to the area? We have no idea if we're going to have 500 members tomorrow or if it's going to take us a few years to get that, but the fees will cover use of equipment and consumables and then some consumables will be an extra fee added upon to that. Clay, for example.
So, there's the cost of this space is what you're trying to cover throughout the funds?
With the funds that I'm requesting from you? Yeah, the common area, the safety, the parking lot, security system, that kind of thing.
And you have an annual program and you also have a program with some of the other museums around the country?
We do, actually. We buy into the Association of Science and Technology Centers Passport Program, which allows our members to travel and go to other science centers for free. It also advertises for them to come to our institution for free.
And your rates are much cheaper than some other places?
Some of them, yeah.
That's not a place to increase the rates to get more funding?
We care about access, so it's hard to increase them too much. This membership to The Rivet will be a separate membership than what is to the science center side of things in Discovery Space. And it's all one nonprofit. We know that if we want teens in the space, Discovery Space has a reputation for engaging young children. Teens don't want to be around young children because in their minds, they're adults. So, we knew that we needed to brand it separately.
I don't have any questions. I have a couple of comments. I appreciate you all occupying that space. I really like to see redevelopment of existing spaces and I think that you all were brave in taking on that space and its location. So, thank you for that and I appreciate hearing about some of the programs that you're offering and, you know, how you're participating in the larger community. Appreciate that.
Thanks. Another element of this is classes, so maybe you're not an entrepreneur or you don't know how to use a laser cutter, but you're interested. We have community members that want to teach in all of these areas. In fact, the way we developed the space was literally listening to the community's interests and needs, what they don't have, what they would like to use, what would be useful. And so, they're not full-time jobs, but they're, they're work for local artists and skilled. We have, we have high school students, we have college students and all the way up. At our opening event, we had 21-year-olds and 81-year-olds and everyone in between. It was fun.
I guess I do have one question. Do you have a scholarship program?
We do. We are actually, on the science center side of things, we raise cap funds, Community Access Program funds, and those allow us to provide scholarships to summer camps or, or memberships to families.
Thank you.
Let's ask, are there different levels of membership fees for where your residence is? So, if this is located in Ferguson Township, is there any benefit to those residents or Center County, is there any tiered membership like that?
We haven't done that yet. We haven't thought through that yet, but I'm willing to think about that. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
See what the board feels as far as the donation for the Discovery Space. Anybody want to start off?
Again, that's a Pine Grove Mills resident. I just want to go off of something that we heard earlier and it's that idea of access to everybody. My wife and I, our family, we are members of Discovery Space, so we're one of the 175 within Ferguson Township. What I've seen, Discovery Space is access and outreach. My wife had worked there and anytime there was a family that maybe had been in need and there was concerns about, can they afford a membership, can they afford to come in for a day, there was never a hesitation from the staff or the executive leadership there to say, "Give them access, give them something, let them come in, let them experience this, let these, you know, kids really learn something here." And I want to say my hat's off to you for establishing that, you know, that culture of supporting and access for everybody there. So, anything that can be done at the township to support Discovery Space, I think, I know myself, our family would be behind and we hope that those around the table would be as well, so, just wanted to add at least my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel good about this donation. I had that question, I wasn't sure and confirmed Cherry Nonprofit structure.
I love that there's an area for teens. I love that that new park is open 14 and up.
And the entrepreneurial aspect of it, too, is really, really interesting.
I mean, those are things that we just don't have access to anywhere else.
And seriously, the infrastructure there is like, wow, it's right in that North Atherton corridor and, yeah, the sidewalk is this big.
You can get into the park game from Cherry Lane, am I right? So, it does make it more convenient.
Nice, nice. Less deadly.
Yeah, so it's, you know, there is a grading issue at Cherry Lane in North Atherton. We can bring up later, so, that's, I don't know if you guys have noticed that, but yeah. But I, I don't, I, I still think that, you know, maybe just to do it for one year, I'm hesitant to do a multi-year at this level.
Yeah, we did discuss that last year, sort of.
Oh, I thought it was five, over three years, not five each year.
The letter says five each year.
They're asking five each year.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I take you back what I said. Okay.
Okay, I guess my thought is, I'm not quite comfortable with 5,000.
No, I'm not either, per year.
I mean, I, I think the, we should be supporting
Yeah.
this type of effort in the community. I'm not sure the township's role is that large. We did discuss that before when the initial request came in and we did increase beyond what we'd normally done at that point, because it is moving, you know, it is a township, they, the facility, and, I mean, I would be more comfortable with 2,000 or 2,500, not 5,000.
Yeah, when you're gone, per year like that, for sure, yeah. I also wanted to add something I was thinking about during the presentation was that, you know, in the Parks Comp Plan, we talked a lot about other recreational offerings. That comprehensive plan wasn't just about what we are financing through Cog Parks, is very confusing, the whole structure. But, you know, really, if there's access, if it's affordable, if they're counting, if they're saying lots of Ferguson Township residents use it, it's a nonprofit, it provides programming in an area that we just don't have, it also serves multiple age groups and in different areas, like not just recreation, but also entrepreneurship. Like, I feel like this is a really good fit for that kind of programming, you know, and I'm glad that they're providing this indoor space, because another thing you're going to hear out of that comp plan is indoor space for programming, indoor space for programming, and it's great to be able to maybe point to this as another facility that we can partner with instead of funding the whole thing, so.
And the redevelopment of an existing building, I think.
Yes.
To echo that.
Yeah. So, I, I'll support what you're saying, Steve, in a nutshell.
So, finding the right amount is hard for me, I don't still have a handle on it, but I think the, the amount, the, the amount that they have to spend for the whole facility is substantially high, so this is a small percent of that. And I must admit that, yeah, my five-year-old also needs bribing, so I do have a vested interest, but I'll, I don't know what the right amount is.
For the chair, if I'm out, perhaps. Sure. What was the amount that you said?
I said 2,000 or 2,500.
Per year or as a total?
This is only a one-year.
Okay, sorry, okay, for one year, gotcha.
Yeah, I, I'm not, we consciously went away from doing all of it.
Which is what D E verified, gotcha. Sure. Want to make a motion? Make a motion?
I will make a motion that we authorize a contribution of 2,500 to Discovery Space.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'm going to call for a brief recess.
Perfect timing. Excellent, excellent. Perfect timing. Excellent, excellent.